Welcome to the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission meeting, a special meeting for Thursday, December 9th, 2010. So we will begin with roll call, please.
Item one, roll call. Commissioner Fwad.
Here.
Commissioner Sahakian.
Present.
Commissioner Yakubian.
Here.
Commissioner Weisman.
Here.
Chairperson Welch.
Here.
The next item?
Item 1A, flag salute, Chairperson Welch.
Everyone please rise.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item two is posting of agenda. The agenda for the Thursday, December 9th, 2010, special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by Friday, December 3rd, 2010, before 5:30 PM on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Very good, thank you. Next item, three?
Item three is selection of a new chairperson for the Transportation and Parking Commission for one year.
Okay, so I would like to declare that nominations are now in order. Would somebody like to make a nomination?
I would. I would like to nominate Commission Member Weisman.
Very good, thank you.
And I would do the same. I know no seconds are needed, but I would support that nomination.
Any other nominations? Okay, so if there are no further nominations, nominations are now closed. Let us take a vote on the nomination of Commissioner Weisman to become the next chair.
Commissioner Fwad?
Yes.
Commissioner Sahakian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman?
Yes.
Chairperson Welch?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the trust my colleagues have in me, and hopefully I won't do anything to...
You'll do just fine.
There you go. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And what is next, please?
Item four is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion.
I have no cards for oral communications. This is for items not a part of the agenda, so last chance. I guess nobody is out there for oral communications. What is the next item, please?
Item five is public hearing. At 5A is report regarding application by Citywide Transportation, Inc., for an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical transportation services in the city of Glendale. At 5A1 is motion to approve the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Citywide Transportation, Inc. 5A2 is motion to approve the application for an owner's permit to operate two non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale by Citywide Transportation, Inc. And 5A3 is motion to deny application for an owner's permit to Citywide Transportation, Inc., for a non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale, and continuing the matter with no further notice to January 24th, 2011.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing and go to staff for the presentation.
Chairman members of the commission, I'm going to turn over to Alina Morshidyan, prepare the staff report, give you a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, Chairperson Weisman, members of commission. The report in front of you is for Citywide Transportation, Inc. Citywide Transportation, Inc. has applied to operate two non-emergency medical transportation vehicles in the city of Glendale within the window specified in Chapter 584 of the Glendale Municipal Code. The applicant is a duly incorporated business in the state of California. The applicant has provided certificate of domestic stock ownership and current certificate of good standing issued by California Secretary of State, which has been verified by city staff. Their business address is noted as 51560 Chevy Chase Drive in Glendale, California. This was the address supplied to us at the time of the application. However, since the applicant has informed the city that they have moved to a different location, and they will have that information for us. The vehicles to be used for operation will be stored at the aforementioned location. The color scheme of the vehicles is dark blue with white lettering, and it has a logo of a cityscape. The color scheme and the official logo are not in conflict with any existing non-emergency medical transportation providers in the city of Glendale. The rates that they will be charging are lower than the average range of fares charged by other non-emergency transportation providers in the city. Citywide Transportation has been in operation since 2007 in other jurisdictions. Mr. Gregorian, the president of the company, is experienced in the daily operation of non-emergency transportation management. Previously, he has also worked as a driver for another non-emergency transportation company, so he's experienced in coordinating patient transportation and scheduling. The company has been providing services to Baldwin Park, Downey, and Harbor City Kaiser Permanente Hospitals and surrounding rehabilitation centers. They are also permitted right now to operate in cities of Glendora, Downey, Baldwin Park, Burbank, and Los Angeles. They have offered a safety training program, which is very comprehensive. They will professionally train their drivers, including proper operation of the wheelchair lifts, wheelchair loading and unloading, and applying the brakes in wheelchairs in and out of the vehicles. They also teach their drivers to be able to transport non-ambulatory patients on gurney and operate oxygen tanks. They require their drivers to go through two weeks of training before being assigned a patient transportation schedule. First aid training and CPR from Craig CPR and first aid training facility, they require their drivers to maintain and renew their certifications. Drivers and driver aides assigned to gurney transportation of patients are required to be emergency medical technicians and have a current first aid and CPR certification. They propose to operate two vehicles. Both vehicles are meeting the requirements listed, the 15-year age requirement as stipulated in Glendale Municipal Code. They have also submitted a comprehensive vehicle maintenance plan. They have provided one written personal reference and one written professional reference, all of which were favorable to the applicant. As far as special programs, the applicant offers non-ambulatory gurney transportation to patients, and all vehicles are equipped to transport wheelchair and are ADA accessible. Although they are a new applicant, the company has established business relationships with the several medical offices in the area, and they have provided evidence to such. These medical offices are willing and are committed to procure Citywide Transportation services for their transportation needs. They have indicated that they do serve about 120 patients per month in the Los Angeles County area and anticipate providing services to approximately 30 patients per month in the city of Glendale. At this time, based on the information provided above, staff respectfully recommends that the Transportation and Parking Commission approve the application for an owner's permit, a new owner's permit, for one non-emergency medical vehicle in the city of Glendale. This will allow the applicant to establish itself in the city of Glendale, and at a later time they can reapply and obtain the additional permit that they were originally requesting.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I do have a question. The year make and model of the vehicle, it seems a little old, although it's common among other non-emergency vehicles. I would like to know from the operator, Mr. Chair, what's the criteria of replacing such a vehicle? Is it the mileage? Is it too many breakdowns, if possible?
Yes, if there's a representative from Citywide Transportation, awesome. And please state your name for the record. Thanks.
So, I'm owner of Citywide Transportation. And what's the question? Can you repeat again, please?
The question again?
Yeah, please.
What's your criteria, the company's criteria, of replacing aged vehicles, vehicles with...
Oldest one, my oldest vehicle is 2003. That's a Ford E350. But we, in the future, we already switching to Sprinter, Dutch Sprinter, which is the best one for business, for field mileage, for everything. I mean, we're not going to be more than six, seven years old, our vehicles. We're planning to do that.
What's the threshold? In general, I'm trying to understand, not only in your case, but in the future, as staff will be studying and coming up with new criterias of how we're going to, and how many licenses we're going to issue. I'm trying to understand, is it, if a vehicle has 100,000 miles on it, is that your criteria, or it's 200,000 miles?
No, I mean, criteria, this vehicle, I mean, we driving there about 200, 300 miles. I mean, we taking care very well of our vehicles because there's all day running, and whenever we need to change engine, we have to change it. We have to do that. It doesn't matter. We have to keep, I mean, standard whatever asking Glendale City, whatever requiring. For example, LA asking 15 years old, we having 15 years, we not keeping that older.
Right.
Because it's dangerous for patient, dangerous for business, for everybody. I mean, we have to keep our business around with a safe vehicle.
Okay. Chairman, I'm sorry. I just had another brief question. The Sprinter, is that the model with the Mercedes turbo diesel?
Yeah, it's a Mercedes turbo diesel. We have a company has a two, we have a two Ford, 350 and two Mercedes Sprinters. Those are the best vehicles.
I was going to say, is it because of the increased inside height?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lower model, which is good on Glendale Street. We can park on Glendale Street because it's lower than eight feet. Other one I have 8.2. That's one we have to park in our parking space. Sometime driver took the car and parked outside, and they got a ticket. But now we parking that vehicle by parking garage, I mean, by office. So, we have one lower roof and one high top.
Ah, okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gregorian?
A question, maybe, John, you can answer this. If, you know, there's several motions that are on the table for this, but per staff's recommendations, one vehicle to be approved. In the situation of a breakdown of the vehicle, could you explain to me again what are the, I suppose, the possible ways, how would the applicant be able to adjust to that? If a vehicle, they've been approved for, let's say they're to use one of their vehicles in Glendale, it breaks down, what vehicle are they then allowed to bring in, or is it assigned to that one particular vehicle? Am I getting my question out correctly, or...
Yeah, the permit is assigned to that particular vehicle. They get a permit for that vehicle, so if their vehicle breaks down, they're going to have to defer their calls to another operator.
I see.
Because otherwise, we have to then issue another permit, which that's not the case in here. That's what...
And there's no temporary, there's no temporary...
If we know if there's an issue, that they can come to the city and we will accommodate them. In other words, if they have to replace the vehicle, and let's say they had a major engine problem, and
Right.
they will not be able to operate that particular vehicle of record, we will work with them to
I see, okay.
give them a, you know, replacement permit for another vehicle until they replace.
Until they replace it. Very good. Thank you.
Are there any questions more for Mr. Gregorian? If not, you can have a seat, sir, and we'll continue our discussion here. I guess what I'd like to understand is the difference between motions one and two. And I guess what I'm asking is what would maybe be the reasons why we would not want to do motion two right now?
Mr. Chairman, in the past, in terms of what we've brought to the commission, when we have a new operator operating in Glendale that we don't have any experience with them, we've recommended, they've come in with five vehicle requests, four vehicle requests, and so on, and we've recommended to staff as a matter of policy, internal policy, one vehicle, so that the operator can get their feet wet, get their marketing that they believe, you know, they can operate in Glendale. We can check and make sure that they're properly licensed and they meet all the requirements, and if so, then they can always more than welcome to come back next year and apply for additional vehicle. That way, the commission has, staff can give the commission that they're a good operator. And in most cases, over the history of last 10 years, we haven't, we've had average of two operators come in into Glendale to get permits, and we grew from 67 permitted vehicles to almost 100 vehicles. Majority of the ones that have come, you know, we've increased the number of permits, is because those operators have expanded, because they built their business and they've added. So however, that doesn't preclude the commission, if you feel the operator is a good operator, and they've presented all themselves as a good operator, that you can consider the second motion. We've just always recommended one to see how they perform, and then if come back next year and they've done well, they can always get more vehicles. And in some cases, they've actually come back and justify three or four additional vehicles in the...
And the application window opens in July. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would be about seven months before...
Seven months before they can come back, yes.
If we go with 5A1, would it be the Ford or the Sprinter that would be the vehicle?
We did not have a, no. We can discuss that with the applicant and see which one is their preference. Obviously, the newer vehicle maybe will be the preferred one, but
Right.
that is something, depending on which vehicle they bring for inspection, we will approve that particular vehicle.
Okay, if there are no other comments, do I hear a motion?
Move 5A1.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fwad?
Yes.
Commissioner Sahakian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Weisman?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item 5B is report regarding application by Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation, Inc., for an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical transportation services in the city of Glendale. 5B1 is motion to approve the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation, Inc. 5B2 is motion to deny the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation, Inc., and continuing the matter with no further notice to January 24th, 2011.
Okay, and we'll go to staff for the report.
Commissioner, Chairperson Weisman, members of commission, this is a report regarding an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle by Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation. The applicant has submitted an application to the city clerk's office within the window specified in Chapter 584 of the Glendale Municipal Code. Aero Non-Emergency, Inc. is a duly incorporated business in the state of California. They have provided certificate of domestic stock ownership and a current certificate of good standing issued by California Secretary of State, which has been verified by city staff. The business address of the applicant is noted as 3905 San Fernando Road in Glendale, California. The dispatch of the vehicles will take place at this business location. The applicant has noted that the vehicles to be used by operation by Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation will be stored at a different location, 4736 Locker Center Avenue, and they have noted that that's a residential area. However, they have assured staff that the vans will be stored on their driveway or in a garage. The color scheme of the vehicle is silver and blue. At this time, no other operator or applicant has vehicles with this color scheme. The fares that they will be charging are lower than the average range of fares charged by other non-emergency medical transportation providers. They have incorporated in 2009, Mr. Karapetian, the president of the company, is experienced in the daily operation and aspects of field transportation management, but he does not have, he has not operated as a non-emergency medical transportation provider as of yet, because he's in the process of establishing his business. Previously, he has worked for another transportation company and has field experience as a driver of transportation vans, and has experience transporting wheelchair-bound clients. They have submitted a training and a safety procedure program that will be implemented by the company once they are granted an owner's permit to operate in the city of Glendale. And the company will be operating with one driver initially. However, should they expand their business, they are ready to practice procedures that they have submitted to the city as their safety and training program. They are required to go training that is designed to prepare all new drivers on safety guidelines for patient transportations. Drivers will be professionally trained for proper procedures to operate wheelchair loading and unloading, proper use of wheelchair lifts, training on all equipment and vehicles, and map reading. They do have drug screening prior to employment, and they require them to be tested every two years thereafter at a company-assigned facility. They have established a comprehensive vehicle maintenance program, and they have submitted information in that regard. They have provided one written professional reference and two written professional, one written personal reference and two written professional references, all of which were favorable to the applicant. Although this is a new non-emergency medical transportation company, the company has established business relationships with several medical offices in the area. They have provided evidences to such that they will be working with medical facilities in Glendale transporting patients. And these companies are willing to procure Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation to serve their patient base, once they are approved to operate in the city of Glendale. At this time, Aero Non-Emergency Medical Transportation, Inc. has satisfied the conditions required for Chapter 584 of the Glendale Municipal Code for an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical transportation. Based on the information submitted, staff recommends that Traffic and Transportation Commission approve the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Welch?
Mr. Chair, sorry to be pedantic, but the seating capacity is listed as three for the vehicle, but looking at the pictures, it looks like you could easily fit five or more. So just wanted to point that out for the record.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move 5B1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fwad?
Yes.
Commissioner Sahakian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Weisman?
Yes. What is next, please?
5C is report regarding application by Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc., for an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical transportation services in the city of Glendale. 5C1 is motion to approve the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc. And 5C2 is motion to deny the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc., and continuing the matter with no further notice to January 24th, 2011.
And we'll go to staff for presentation.
Chairperson Welch, members of commission, this is a report by Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc., to operate one non-emergency medical transportation vehicle in the city of Glendale. The applicant has submitted their application to city clerk's office within the window specified in Chapter 584 of the Glendale Municipal Code. Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc. is a duly incorporated business in the state of California. The applicant has provided certificates of domestic stock ownership and a current certificate of good standing, which has been verified by city staff. The business address of the company is 3300 Bodri Terrace in Glendale, California. Dispatch will take place from this location. The vehicles to be used for operation by Comfort Care Transportation, Inc. will be stored at the address noted above, which is a residential area. However, they have noted that the van will be stored on their driveway or garage. The color scheme of the vehicle is white with black lettering. The company name Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc. is in black lettering with a light blue silhouette surrounding Comfort Care. The color scheme and official logo are not in conflict with any existing non-emergency medical transportation providers in the city of Glendale. The fares for one-way trip during regular business hours are slightly lower than the average range of fares charged by other non-emergency medical transportation providers in the city. Comfort Care is a new company seeking to establish business in the city of Glendale. The company was incorporated in 2010, and they have applied for a new owner's permit to operate in the city. Mr. Ajamian, the president of the company, has experience in care of elderly and dependent adults. However, he has not demonstrated previous experience in the field of non-emergency medical transportation. The company will be operating with one driver initially. Should they expand their business, they are ready to practice procedures for safety and training. They have provided information as to such that training will take place with an experienced driver for two weeks prior to being assigned a patient transport schedule. The training is designed to prepare all new drivers on safety guidelines for patient transportation. For instance, they will train their new drivers on wheelchair loading, unloading, proper use of wheelchair lifts, and they require that all new drivers receive certification in first aid training and CPR from a company-approved first aid training facility. The drivers are also required to undergo drug screening prior to employment, should they add additional staff to their company, and be tested at least once a year thereafter. They are proposing to operate one vehicle, as provided in the report. The age of the vehicle that they propose to operate is within the 15-year age requirement as stipulated in Glendale Municipal Code. They do offer a vehicle maintenance plan, which includes complete mechanical inspection for the vans every six months, including oil change and transmission fluid check at every 3,000 miles. They have provided one written personal reference and one written professional reference for the company, for the company's president. The company also included four professional references from medical offices in the area that are willing to render the services of the applicant, once they are approved to operate in the city of Glendale, and all references were favorable to the applicant. As far as special programs, the applicant offers non-ambulatory gurney transportation to patients. All vehicles are equipped to transport wheelchairs and are ADA accessible. Comfort Care Non-Emergency Transportation, Inc. will provide transportation services to patients that are dependent adults, and they have been receiving recommendation from companies that deal with patients that are elderly and dependent adults, and these companies have shown support that they will be working with Comfort Care, and they anticipate to transport about five to seven patients per day, an average of 30 patients per month. At this time, Comfort Care has satisfied all the conditions required by Chapter 584 of the Glendale Municipal Code for an owner's permit to operate medical transportation services. Based on the information provided above, staff respectfully recommends that Transportation and Parking Commission approve the application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Comfort Care Non-Emerg... by Comfort Care Non-Emergency Medical Transportation.
Hey, any questions or comments from the commission?
One quick question, Mr. Chair. Is this a logo that's being used as currently? Because the picture that's included, I'm just curious, the van, the logo, it's obviously, it's been hand-drawn on there. And I'm just curious if this is being used right now.
The applicant has informed that once they are approved for permits, then they will have a permanent decal on their vehicles. But they have submitted what their proposed logo is in order for us to verify that they're not in conflict with any providers.
I did know it was drawn up. Any other questions, comments?
Move 5C1.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fwad?
Yes.
Commissioner Sahakin?
Yes.
Yakubian?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Weisman?
Yes. And let me just briefly say, welcome to the new emergency medical providers who are going to be serving us in the city of Glendale. Want to wish you success in your business. And we do have high standards here and we hope that you will hold to them. Thanks very much. Hey, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I do have follow-up questions to staff on this issue.
Sure.
I'm curious to find out, as far as competition between companies. Now, they can solicit business, well, they can solicit business by going to the hospitals and asking and telling them, "We're a new company in the city," correct? Besides that, again, I have a concern in the back of my mind that five years from now, we're going to have 250 ambulances permitted in the city at this rate. And where are we going with this one? And we don't have a criteria. Everything that's coming our way, we're approving it. Of course, for a good reason. Staff is studying. They're making recommendations based on need and necessity. All the paperwork is in order. But at some point, we're going to run out, these companies are going to run out of patients based on the number of vehicles operating in the city. Where is the competition, if there is any competition coming from? Or each company have their own clientele and they're not stepping on each other's toes?
Chairman, Commissioner, members of the commission, Commissioner Sahakin. That is also been, you know, we've been watching, we've been following the trend. As I said, we started about 65 vehicles in somewhere about 2003. And with, on the average, we've had 23 operators. Every year, you know, you get, on the average, two operators have dropped. And the next year, two operators have been added. So as far as the number of operators have pretty much stayed steady on the average of 23. The number of vehicles have increased. So most, if you, if you think on the average, we also get two, maybe three new operators who are coming in, basically cancels the ones that are getting out of business. Most of those existing operators have increased the number of vehicles. And that's what we see in terms of their renewals. They're coming in, they had two, they're going to three or four or five. There are some that are larger, that are really more as region-wide. So they're operating in multiple cities. There are some that are really focused in Glendale. Based on number of application I've seen over the years, it's mostly, they cater to a couple of doctors or medical facilities. And there's still quite a few in Glendale that they have, they get a niche for one doctor or a couple of doctors or medical facility, and they continuously provide services to them. Because they only have one van, maybe two. So as far as, is there enough business out there? We always wonder, you know, where is this going to end? But there appears to be enough business because the one, the number of vehicles are increasing for the existing operators. But the applicants are pretty much stay the same, minus one or two that they drop off. We are going for next year, look at that and give you some ideas of where we should tighten up, maybe in terms of the requirements, ease the fees or, and see if there's a need for reducing or allowing that, not that many operators in Glendale again. But my other side of things tells me that there is enough business. Otherwise, they will not be investing about $35,000 a vehicle. These vehicles are very expensive. They have to be equipped with wheelchair ramps. They have to meet all the ADA requirements. Our code requires a 15-year age, you know, more than 50 years, we're not allowed. We can look into that in terms of saying, okay, we want vehicles that are newer and so on. However, they go through inspection, they get checked, and they're all safe technically. So it takes a good investment for having even starting with one vehicle. And if they're a good business and they expand, they're providing the services in community, you know, and then we wonder, should be eliminated or should be limited. And so we're not going to take any more applications for a period of years. But it's one of those things, we'll come back and, similar to taxis, have a discussion with the commission, give you some ideas, whether or not we should limit the number. Maybe we should change the criteria or the requirements that you can get a higher level of service from the existing operators or the new operators who are coming in. But most of them, because they do charge the same rates, you know, they, there is not one, you can see that they're really charging at a much lower rate, which means they're getting more business. Pretty much, they all cost per mile. One-way trips or wheelchair trips are all pretty much $25, $30, so.
These are point-to-point trips. It's not like they're driving around or they're, they're parking in front of a hospital, hoping for a trip from the hospital.
They're not like taxis. They, they have to make appointments. And many of their customers, the ones that we know, they do a long, a lot of dialysis services so that they're actually have a regular, you know, weekly schedule with their patients. That they, you know, they take them back and forth twice a week, once a week. So it's a very standard, I don't think they have those, like you make a call and you want a non-emergency vehicle. That doesn't happen.
Hey, are there any other comments or questions? And let's move on to our next agenda item.
Item six, commission staff comments updates.
Staff have any updates?
Chairman, just want to give you a heads up, members of the commission, that our next commission meeting we're scheduling to bring the Safe and Healthy Streets Policy document to the commission. Some of you have been involved, maybe in some of the workshop that has taken place. And that document has been circulated by city staff from various departments. And there's been a lot of workshops that have taken place. So we did, our last review of the document is being updated. And we plan to have it as a joint meeting with the planning commission because, again, some of these documents cross both commissions in terms of roles and responsibilities. And because we want to move that document forward to get it to city council, the next regular commission meeting will be a joint meeting of Transportation Parking Commission, similar to what you had last month. We also feel that there is a lot of synergy when you see the planners and Transportation Parking Commission members, we get feedback from both of you at the same time. So that's what we're planning to do for, for next meeting. There might be a subsequent, depending on the comments we get, that we may have to bring that back to you one more time before we finalize it and then take it to the city council. So just so that, you know, we will try to get that document beginning of the year. It's a thick document. It's a lot of information in it. We have adequate time to review and we'll give you a presentation. Staff from Public Works Department, Planning Department, Parks and Recreation Department will all be here.
And will that be on our regular meeting day?
Yes, we traded off, last time we went to the planning commission regular meeting and they accommodate, we accommodate, commission accommodate the planning commission now. They will be meeting at your regular hourly schedule.
Will it only be a special meeting or will we also do a separate?
It will be just that meeting will be dedicated for that because there's a lot of material that we need to discuss. So it will take all your time.
All right. Any of my colleagues have any comments or?
I do have several issues. But first a question. The reason we're not approving the minutes from our previous regular meeting is because these are special meetings?
It's a special meeting. According personally, attorney's office, when we have special meetings, bring it to your regular meeting. So in January, we will have the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. Number two. Some of our neighboring cities, I think Burbank is one of them, their taxicab fleet is 50% green vehicles. And, and it's, it's been discussed in the, you know, transportation circles. And I want staff to keep that in, in mind when, when you start working on, on the new protocols. Because it's doable, honestly. The prices of these vehicles are coming down. And there is no reason whatsoever to keep using the bigger sedans. And there's federal government incentives, rebates to purchase those vehicles. And if Burbank can do it, I think we can do it. Now, I know one of the operators, I believe, at this time, there's only one vehicle in Glendale that's green.
It is one vehicle, but as part, if you recall, the last operator, City Cab, they had a plan to replace their vehicle over time. And that was one of the reasons they were appealing the commission decision that they wanted to have adequate time to replace those vehicles. You know, at least get 50% of their vehicles converted. I personally, in fact, talked to them and I said, you know, we need to, we would like to see as well, those type of vehicles that are operating at the airport. Because that was one of the biggest thing that they were operating in the airport. Consequently, I mean, if they're operating in the airport, they're actually licensing Glendale too. So we're getting the benefit of vehicles that are clean vehicles operating in Burbank and in Glendale as well. But as, as we discussed, that was one of those areas that we would like to see new operators that are coming for renewals, that they have a provision that they will, you know, convert their vehicles to clean vehicles over time.
Issue number three. And this, I'm not sure who would be the lead on this one, Jono, but in the city of LA, we have an emergency preparedness department. So they're the lead on this issue. But here's, here's the issue. I've been dealing and, and working with TRB on, on an all-hazard evacuation scenario where, God forbid, if there's a major disaster and we're going to be evacuating. Obviously, the city doesn't have enough resources to do it on its own. It could be major floods, it could be the foothill areas, or it could be an all-city evacuation if it's a chemical or biological situation. What I'm working on is to break a deal with taxicab companies, with the mass transit operators within, within the city, to include clauses in the contracts that in case of an emergency, they will dedicate their buses, what's available, of course, and even take out the regular service buses and dedicate them to the emergency evacuation. Now, the federal government, the TRB and I think USDOT will, will come out with a recommendation of, of two, two cities to do this type of deals. The, the advantage of the non-ambulatory vehicles using them is there is a special population that, that they need wheelchairs and what have you. And, and they're, they would be, I mean, their database will, will identify where those people live in case we need to evacuate them. It's a lot of work that needs to be done, but I think it's, it's a flag that we need to start working on it. If, if you're working on a new protocol with the taxicab companies or with the ambulatory companies, let's, let's include, you know, let's, let's draft contracts that include those clauses. And if, I will bring samples, once we finish ours. We did complete our transit clause, basically, and because the dash and commuter express, it's operated by a contractor. And, and the understanding is if we have an evacuation, they will give us their buses with their operators to assist us with the evacuation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sahakin. Our fire department is the lead in all emergencies. However, since we, Glendale, we own our own buses. We already have that in place that our companies are, trans, fixed route operators on call and during emergencies. And our mechanics are also trained to, you know, access the buses in case of emergencies, evacuation, which we do. And we've had a number of those situations come up where we actually use our B-line buses, including taking our firemen and police areas that were needed as part of the mutual aid. And as far as the taxis and non-emergencies, they are in our database. So in emergencies, we have access to them. But what you're mentioning is one step beyond that to have some more agreements in place that we can access, have them during emergencies. And we certainly will entertain that. So be happy to receive information.
We've even done, what we've done, Jono, is we have pre-identified emergency evacuation routes. The city of Glendale is not, is not a big city. It could be easily done. We've done it for the city of LA. And, and including signalization where during evacuations, we can turn the signals and lock them on green, flushing the traffic that basically is outbound and not allowing anybody to enter the evacuation perimeter, the hot zone, let's say. So those are things that I'll be more than happy to assist, since I'm working on it already. And, and I think transportation should have a role in it. I understand fire is, is the lead on it, but you're the experts as far as traffic volumes, what street should be used, what are the widths of the streets and, and parking issues. Because some of the mountain fire district zones, they have only one lane in each direction. And, and, you know, you need to turn them into one-way operations, whatever. All right, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Welch for doing a great job as the chair of the TPC for the last year. And he provided me with a lot of good input throughout the year on agenda items and issues. And he actually took the time and really worked hard with us on our, on the transit fare structure and provided a lot of good input, make us work harder. And, which was very, very beneficial. So I personally want to thank you for being very, very helpful to us. And I appreciate all of you because you bring a totally different perspective as we go through our transportation issues, which we're looking forward to next year. There's going to be many, many policy issues bringing back to this commission for your recommendation to council. So thank you very much, Commissioner Welch.
Yes, thank you for that. And I would also like to echo that sentiment as well. It's, it's been a fun year. Hopefully, we'll have a funner year in 2011.
It's your job.
I guess so. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.